Let us continue to worship our God this evening, Sis Matipolo. Let us continue to build our lives in His presence, for in His presence, there is fullness and joy. Worthy of every song we could ever sing, worthy of all the praise we could ever bring, worthy of every breath we could ever breathe, we live for you. Oh, we live for you, Lord. Jesus, the name above every other name. Jesus, the only one who could ever save. Worthy of every breath we could ever breathe, we live for you. Holy, there is no one like you, there is none beside you. Open up my eyes in wonder and show me who you are and fill me with your heart and lead me in your love to those around me. You are worthy, Jesus. You are worthy, Lord. Worthy of every song we could ever sing, worthy of all the praise we could ever bring, worthy of every breath we could ever breathe, we live for you. Oh, we live for you, Lord, Jesus. Jesus, the name above every other name. Jesus, the only one who could ever save. Worthy of every breath we could ever breathe, we live for you. Oh, we live for you, Lord. And holy, there is no one like you, there is none beside you. Open up my eyes in wonder and show me who you are and fill me with your heart and lead me in your love to those around me. And holy, there is no one like you, there is none beside you. Open up my eyes in wonder and show me who you are and fill me with your heart and lead me in your love to those around me. We pray, Jesus. We pray, Lord God, that we may learn to build our lives in your presence, Jesus, Lord. For you are worthy of every praise and everything, Lord God. We praise you, Jesus. And I will build my life upon your love. It is a firm foundation. And I will put my trust in you alone. And I will not be shaken. I will build my life upon your love. It is a firm foundation. And I will put my trust in you alone. And I will not be shaken. Holy, there is no one like you, there is none beside you. Open up my eyes in wonder and show me who you are and fill me with your heart and lead me in your love to those around me. And holy, there is no one like you, there is none beside you. Open up my eyes in wonder and show me who you are and fill me with your heart and lead me in your love to those around me. And I will build my life upon your love. It is a firm foundation. And I will put my trust in you alone. And I will not be shaken. I will build my life upon your love. It is a firm foundation. And I will put my trust in you alone. And I will not be shaken. We quote ourselves, Lord God, in your presence, Lord. We pray in your presence, Lord God. There is love, there is compassion, there is peace. And Lord, tonight may you continue to open our hearts and minds to your word. We praise you, everything you Father, God, and Jesus leave, we pray. Amen.
Let's pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you for another opportunity to worship you, to listen from your word, to learn from your instruction. Now, we would like to meet to you this time of study together, and we pray that the Holy Spirit will teach us and help us, Lord, to understand every word that your servant Jerry is going to teach us, help us, Lord, to absorb every principle, Lord, and help us, Lord, to apply it into our lives. Help us, Lord, to become more like Jesus, more like you, oh Lord, that we may give glory to your name. We pray, Father, that you will continue, Lord, to work in us and through us, and by your word, we will continually be changed, just like Jesus. Now, we acknowledge your presence, Lord, at this time, and we commit to you this time together of study. We just praise you and give you back all the praises, honor, and thanksgiving. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Paul, Kriya June, Colles, and thank the Lord also for our praise and worship team and tech team who played the song. Our speaker is Brother Jerry Castro, and he is our head's CCF, Dipolo Family Ministry. He is also one of our COS. Nasi Lani, Ati Jean, your wife, are part of our COS. So Brother Jerry is a leader both in the corporate world and dito sa Gawa Inopan. So it's a joy to listen to him, to hear God's word from here. So now, let's welcome Brother Jerry for our topic on Romans, Chapter 8. Let's prepare our hearts to listen. Where's Jerry?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Kamusta po kayong lahat? So, I greet everyone here in the precious name of our Lord Jesus Christ. So, yeah, let me take this, let us take this pressure moment that the Lord has given us today as we are gathered here once again to study this, to study His word. I want to welcome all of you sa dito sa ating Wednesday session called Miracle-est. For those of you who are first time to attend this event, it is a Bible study series about Romans. So I'm sure many of you have attended or has been with us for the last few weeks and know how thrilling it is, how exciting it is, itong series na'to. Some study are quite, quite deep, di ba? Tapos ina-unravel natin kung anong ibig sabihin, so it's quite exciting. But yeah, for those of you are here with us for the first time, we thank God that you are here and we thank God that you are going to learn a lot tonight. Maraming maraming salamat po na kasama namin kayo ngayon. Brothers and sisters, this is actually a rare opportunity for us to join our minds together as we study and learn from the Bible, specifically the book of Romans. Alam niyo po, it is our responsibility to study the word of God and learn to know, you know, what is the will of God in our lives. And I want to thank the Lord for giving us this chance, this rare opportunity, to learn about His word, to learn about His word. So we look forward na lahat po tayo, at the end of the series, we shall praise and honor God for the love He has given us and how we can live a victorious life for His name's glory. So again, welcome, everyone. Welcome, CCF Dipolo. So, let's review. So for the past two weeks, we were able to study this truth. Next slide, please. Yeah. So, we have learned for the last two chapters, basically, pag pinagsama natin yun, that we are set free from the law of sin and death through our Lord Jesus Christ. Pag itong pinag-aralan natin, especially those na kasama natin for the last few weeks, is this, can we treat this as a good news? Di ba? Actually, hindi nga'to great good news eh. It's great news, right? Can I get an amen on that one, or can I see a thumbs up, right? Di ba? Good news ito eh, di ba? So, basically, let's review again what we have been talking about for the past few weeks, or maybe what we can do is, we'll go for a different route this time, a different kind of summary, a different type of review what we have been talking about for the last seven weeks before we jump in dun sa ating topic. Is that okay? Yeah, okay. So, next slide, please. So let me introduce to you Mr. Eugene Lang. Okay? Siya 'yung naka-in circle. So, on June 25 of 1981, Eugene Lang returned to the elementary school he had been attending for the past 53 years. Si Lang po is a successful businessman during the time. Millionary po siya. But the neighborhood, ako saan 'yung school na inatendan niya, hindi po masyadong nagbago. The place was East Harlem, and that time, 'yung mga bata, 'yung mga tao, mahirap pa din. 'Yung dropout dun sa community school was quite, parang highest amongst the nation during the time. And as Lang made the standard graduation day speech about working hard, studying, and going to college, he noticed that, you know, kasi ano siya eh, parang dun sa school na pinuntahan niya, he was a resource speaker. So, you know, as a resource speaker, you know, you need to motivate. The objective is to motivate, motivate 'yung mga graduating students. Pero ang nanotis niya, parang wala masyadong nakikinig sa kanya. And so, parang mga sinasabi niya, "This is your first graduation." Elementary to ah, mga elementary students to, of course, along with the parents and along with other guests. Parang as 'yung, the normal route of a graduation speech, parang binabanggit niya, "This is your first graduation. Dream of what you want to be, the kind of life you wish to build. Believe in that dream. Be prepared for work. Always remember, each dream is important because it is your dream, it is your future." And all of this stuff about graduation speech, and he continues like, "You must study, you must learn," and then sinabi niya, "you must attend junior high, high school, you must attend high school, then college." But as he looks, look around, parang 'yung words niya, parang wala lang. No one was actually really believing that, you know, these kids, even themselves, and even actually sad to say, parents na nandun, eh, makakatawid ng elementary to high school or even makakatawid ng college or even high school, no? Kasi the statistics, 'yung history nun lugar, medyo contradicting dun sa sinasabi niya o dun sa speech na sinasabi niya. And then, he tried one more time. So para Eugene Lang, stay in school. And then, parang wala talagang laman. And so suddenly, parang sabi niya, I don't know kung ano naisip niya, but suddenly, he blurted out like, "I will give each of you a college scholarship." So after, parang nung narinig yun nung crowd, after just a moment of silence, biglang nagkaroon ng cheering, applauding, nagkaroon ng excitement dun sa buong, ano na yun, buong room na yun. And it was actually a start of an amazing movement na nakita sa more than 12,000 students na umatend ng college with the help of, you know, additional 200 generous sponsor, additional 200 generous sponsor because of that statement, "I will give you, each of you, college scholarship." And in the first year, nung promise po na yun, no? Lang did more than just guaranteeing the money for those graduating students. Actually, ang ginawa nitong ni Eugene Lang is that he helped 'yung buong school administration, our administrator, to prepare the students for high school, for college, even hiring tutors para sa mga struggling students, no? And giving them the best chance at making their way to high school and eventually to college. To say to the least, 'yung mga graduating students na 'yung mga grade 6 na yun and their families, found out one thing, that Eugene Lang was for them. Now, di ba? Does it make a difference if you know someone that is for you, di ba? And this is the good news. And this is something that we have been talking about for the last few weeks. God is for you. That is, if I'm going to summarize, you know, what we have been talking about and what we are about to study in the next few weeks, the truth is, God is for you. You know, the verse says in the last part of Romans, "If God is for us..." Pare, can you underline that, you know, that phrase? "If God is for us." You know, the Greek word "if," in this case, it doesn't mean that God, God's being for us is a possibility, di ba? Kasi, baka mamaya sabihin natin, di ba? May if, di ba? Instead, you know, pag kininig na niyo siya, instead, hindi siya possibility eh. Instead, it's a certainty. You know, for example, if the clock would say 12:30 PM, you might say, "If I'm going to eat lunch today, I'd better be going," di ba? More than likely, the statement isn't about the possibility of you eating lunch. It's about you, di ba? Eating lunch. It's not a possibility. It's a certainty that you will eat lunch, no? And so, if you're going to look at the statement, it isn't about the possibility of God's love for us. It's about the certainty of God's love for each one of us. So take a moment. Let's take this brief moment and say, "For every word, God is for us." Let me, let me change it a little bit. "God is for you." You know, your family may have turned their backs on you. Your child may have disappointed you, or you may have disappointed your family. Your job may have disappeared into the, you know, parang nawala na lang siya because of some layoffs, because of some cutbacks. But the reality is, the maker of the earth is for you. The one who laid the floor ng karagatan is for you. The one who scattered the more than 100 billion stars, over 100 billion galaxies in what scientists say is a length of more than 30 million light-years. That creator is for you. God is for you. You know, not was, not will be, or might be, but is right now. God is for you. There's no waiting, kaibigan. There will be no probationary period. Right now, I want you to know that God is for you. His availability to you is not dependent on whether you are, you've been good or bad. No? Hindi siya katulad nung misanta clause na merong list na chine-check twice, na malapin na 'yung Pasko, by the way, and frowning na, or para Sisi Mamat na, parang ano ba 'yung ginawa mo last week, di ba? The reality is, God is for you, right now. In Isaiah 49 comes this amazing statement. It says, "I have written your name on my hand." You know what God is telling you and me? Your name, your details, your heart. The revelation of the truth of what we've been talking about for the past seven chapters of Romans is this. The summary of the last two weeks specifically, na ko po ay binigyan ng privilege to share to you 'yung word ng Panginoon. All of this revelation is this, "God is for you." Can you just take a brief moment? Can you just tell that to yourself? Can you just, you know, wherever you are right now, can you just close your eyes? And can you just tell to yourself, "God is for me"? Can you do that for a brief moment? Nasarap nung truth, di ba? Ang sarap is say, "For nung truth." Nasa haba-haba namang preko sapan natin. This is the reality, di ba? And I pray, you know, that you take this, that you take this truth and keep it to your hearts. This truth will actually, or supposed to be, drive us to keep the process of what we have been talking about for the past two weeks, to be sanctified. And so, our topic for today is this. Next slide, please. So, 3.0 na tayo. God's righteousness produces sanctification 3.0. But tonight, we will be specifically talking, talk about the first half of Romans 8. And the theme is to live, for us to live according to the spirit, to the spirit, no? So as we left off last week, when you talk about God, when God is involved, di ba? Pinag-usapan natin, despair is never the word, never the last picture. And Paul said, "Thanks be to God who delivers me through Christ Jesus, our Lord." What we are about to study is how Paul connects this news to chap, to this chapter pertaining to what God has done, from chapter 7, specifically, what God has done that the law cannot do primarily because of our weakness. In this chapter, particularly this first half of Romans 8, Paul looks to Jesus and he finds his standing in Him. This chapter is more than just answered dun sa Romans 7. As I have mentioned last week, di ba? Parang, I know it was quite depressing 'yung, 'yung topic natin last week, except for the last part, di ba? And I promised you that this, you know, this week will be a different tone, di ba? So, you know, this chapter 8, it ties together more than the answer to a continuation of chapter 7. It ties together thoughts from actually the very beginning of the letter or of the book of Romans. And so, next slide, please. So as we continue in the first half of Romans, we will study Romans, Chapter 8, verses 1 to 13. So if you have your Bibles with you, if you can open your Bibles to Romans, Chapter 8, verses 1 to 13, or better yet, I have prepared it here, so I hope you can read it sa screenin yo, no? Itong text natin for tonight. So if we can, if I can just invite everyone to read together Romans 8, verses 1 to 13. So, ready? One, therefore, can you just, can we just all open our audio, please? Just for us to read together this text? Yeah. Alright. So, let's read it together. One, two, three. Therefore... Okay. Muntik na tayong nagsabay-sabay dun, di ba? So at least meron kayong preview o anong nangyari dun sa Speaking of the Tongues. Parang ganun 'yung ginawa natin, tiningin ngayon lang, di ba? So, anyway, thank you for reading with me our text for tonight. So can I just invite everyone, before we continue, for all of us to pray together, please? Let's all bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we believe and trust your word. We want to grow in you more each day and to understand your promises for us. Panginoon, we commit our time together to you and ask that you heal and restore us as we dive into your word. Father, we want a deeper faith. We want to meet with you and know you better. Lord, open our eyes for us to see the opportunities around us, to serve you, and to grow in your blessings and favor. Father, bless our time together. Focus our minds. Soften our... Father, bless our time together, focus our minds, soften our hearts. Father, make our time together count for you. So today, Lord, we want to show you, um, as we study your word, our faithfulness, our love for you. So bless us tonight, Lord, in Jesus' mightiest name, and all of us say amen. Alright, so, uh, let's start with our topic for tonight, so next slide please. You know, Paul, um, started with this, ano, uh, with this uh, statement, no? Uh, to start off this uh, verse, uh, or chapter eight, which is, will set the tone actually for all of us tonight. Kung last time, parang medyo depressing, eto, sabi ko nga, di ba? As I promised, it will be a different tone. So ito kaagad 'yung sinabi ni, ni Paul. No condemnation, no? As we can read in this verse, malino na malino, no condemnation. You know, friends, the simple declaration of um, no condemnation comes to those who are in Christ Jesus, di ba? Sinabi dito, um, there, there is therefore, no, now no condemnation to those who are in Christ Jesus. Here is how we would like to set the tone for our time today, no? Um, since God has, you know, the Father does not condemn Jesus. Neither can the Father condemn those who are in Jesus. They are, they are not condemned. We are not condemned. We will not be condemned, and we cannot be condemned. Malino po yon, hindi po sa akin galing yon. Galing po ito dun sa uh, sa text, galing po ito sa word ni God. Then what I would also like to notice is Paul's therefore, a key in circle nga yan. This is very important, mga kaibigan. It means that what he says from a logical argument, no? It is as if all begins, I can prove. Patutunayan ko sa inyo, kung ano 'yung sinasabi ko dito. 'Yung sinabi niyang therefore eh, full of confidence yon. And this is what he proves, no? If we are one with Jesus, he is our head, and we cannot be condemned. You can't, you know, acquit 'yung head and condemn 'yung kamay. Uh, parang 'yung ganitong picture, uh, parin, uh, tech, can you show the picture? So parang ganyan, di ba? Hindi mo pwedeng uh, lunurin 'yung paa, 'yung kamay, 'yung katawan, uh, 'yung buong katawan, no? As long as the head is out of water. So parang ito 'yung picture na sinasabi sa atin. Um, when we join Jesus, no? We hear the verdict na no condemnation. Let me, let, linawin po natin, 'yung verdict na ito, hindi siya sin- hindi, hindi sinabing less condemnation. That's, sa, you know, sadly, that's where many believers, um, um, ang status ngayon, no? Thinking na 'yung standing nila, standing has improved in Jesus. Wala pong nag-improve. Um, it's been completely transformed, changed to a status of no condemnation. So coming from our, 'yung mga pinag-usapan natin last week, di ba? Coming from that uh, um, status na parang we are, you know, we are supposed to be dead because of sin, because of, you know, uh, because of what we have done. Um, here, what Paul is saying is that we are now, because of Jesus, because we are one with Jesus, we are completely transformed, changed to a status of no condemnation. Now, while it is true that those who are in Christ should not and do not consistently walk according to the flesh, but according to the spirit, this is not a condition wherein um, uh, a status of no condemnation. Our position in Jesus Christ is the reason for our standing of no condemnation. It's not about what we have done, it's not about what we're going to do. It's about our position in Jesus Christ na ang rason nun kung bakit merong no condemnation. And now the phrase, no, uh, what you can see here, 'yung phrase na, in Christ Jesus. 'Yung word na in carries the senses both of in union with or through the work of what happened to us, mga kaibigan, is that, um, has happened because of what Jesus did, through Jesus Christ. And because we have been united by faith with him in Christ Jesus, no? Therefore, we benefit from what he did. We receive this glorious declaration from God's court, di ba? Um, we receive it though, we certainly, you know, with all honesty, deserve condemnation. We receive this standing because Jesus bore the condemnation na tayo dapat ang, ang tumang- ba, tayo ang deserving nun eh. Pero ngayon, ang identity natin, inaki Jesus na. And he is condemned no more, di ba? Napagtagumpayan niya na yan. And the reality is, neither are we. Let me give you a picture of what I am saying here. Remember the story in John chapter eight, di ba? A woman was brought to Jesus by the Pharisees after this woman has been caught in the act of a capital offense, no? There is no question dun sa offense nung woman na yon about whether or not she committed the act. The fact remains, the reality is, she is guilty. The law explicitly outlawed 'yung, 'yung sin na ginawa ng babae na to. And the, um, um, repercussions nun, ang penalty nun is death, death penalty yon. But what happens in the verse, uh, Jesus did not tell the woman, oh, ano, wala kang ginawang mali. Hindi niya sinabi yon. Hindi niya rin sinabi, ah, huwag mo nang intindihin 'yung ginawa mo. Hindi yon ang binabanggit ni Jesus. Instead, Jim, Jesus simply states that he does not condemn her, no? This is, this incident is often misapplied by those who think Christians ought never to speak about sin, di ba? Or against sin. The exact opposite is true. Jesus showed this woman spectacular grace. You know, this picture serves as a useful example to all of us, di ba? The woman, no, uh, is morally and legally guilty. And Jesus is morally and legally perfect. No one on earth had a greater justification na parusahan 'yung babae na yon than Jesus Christ. And yet, Jesus chose not to do what he was allowed to do. So pag sinundan mo, di ba, parang okay, ito 'yung kasalanan, so dapat parusahan, dapat may death penalty. Hindi ginawa ni Jesus what he was allowed to do. Instead, Jesus chose to do what he can do, which was to exercise right judgment, to show mercy and grace. Kaya na sinabi niya dun sa uh, woman, di ba? Then neither do I condemn you. And that is what he did for you and me. Are we okay so far? Um, malino po ba itong, let's first, um, parang try to establish itong first uh, verse of uh, chapter eight. Are we good so far? Okay, so, uh, let's continue. Okay, next slide please. So, uh, can you, can you show the verse please? So, um, so it says here, as you can see, uh, as I have highlighted, no? The law of the spirit, uh, uh, the law of the spirit of life in Christ Jesus has made us free from the law of sin and death. Ah, but the law of sin and death was a strong and seemingly absolute law. Every sin na kinokumit natin proves that. Ang nakita natin na cemeteryo sa dami ng mga nakalibing dun proves na merong death, di ba? But the law of the spirit of life in Christ is stronger still. Parang mas malakas yon. And the law of the spirit, no, frees us from the law of sin and death na pinag-aralan natin for the last uh, two weeks. We are free from the law of sin, though inevitably, no, um, we do sin, but a Christian does not have to sin. What do I mean by that? A Christian does not intentionally sin because he is freed from the uh, sins dominion. We are free from the law of death. So therefore, death no longer has any lasting power against the uh, believer, no? Um, in Romans eight one tells us, we are free from the guilt of sin. In Romans eight two, it tells us, we are free from the power of sin, just like what we have talked about um, in chapter six study. And then verse three says, "For what the law was powerless to do because it was weakened by the flesh," no? It means the law can do many things. Katulad po ng pinag-aralan natin last week. It can guide us, it can teach us, tells us about God's character. But the law cannot give energy to our flesh. It can give us the standard, but it can't give us the power to please God. And then Paul continued it by stating, um, that God did by sending his own son. The law could not defeat sin. It could only detect sin. Only Jesus, no? Let me repeat this, or let me reiterate this. Only Jesus can defeat sin, and he did just that through his work on the cross. And then it says, "By sending his own son in the likeness of sinful flesh." What do, what do, what Paul, ano ba 'yung sinabi ni Paul dito? In order to defeat sin, Jesus had to identify with those bound by it, by becoming in the likeness of sinful flesh, by becoming like a man. Under the inspira- here, no? Si Paul carefully chose his words here, indicating that Jesus was not a sinful flesh. Hindi po yon ang pinatutupuan dito. But he identified with it entirely. He identified with the flesh entirely. When he became a man, he identified with this sinful nature, but not saying that he is sinful, no? We could not say that Jesus came in sinful flesh, no? Because the reality is, he was sinless. We could not say that Jesus came in the likeness of flesh because he was really a human, di ba? Tao talaga siya. Um, hindi lang siya basta tao, di ba? Uh, o naging, parang kung ano plasing tao, naging, the reality is, naging tao siya. And here's what we can say, that Jesus came in the likeness of sinful flesh because although he was human, he was not sinful in himself. Are we okay so far? I hope, hindi ko kayo, hindi ko nagugulo ang inyong isip ngayon, di ba? Simply put it this way, Jesus is our substitute. Jesus was treated as a sinner so we can be treated as righteous. What do I mean by that? Let's, let's discuss it further. Because Jesus fulfilled the righteous requirement of the law. And because we are in Christ, we fulfill the law. And law is fulfilled in us, in regards to what? Simply call it obedience. Question, how is our obedience level? Ano ba tayo sumusunod kay Jesus? Ano ba tayo sumusunod kay God? If we are to score, how we obey God? Where are we? On a scale of one to ten, ten being the highest, being obedient, asan ba tayo dun? Friends, Paul does not say that we fulfill the righteous requirement of the law. He carefully says that the righteous requirement of the law is fulfilled in us. It isn't fulfilled by us, but in us. Yet, ano po natin, nasusundan po natin? God wants the spirit to rule over our flesh. When we allow, no, the spirit, um, when we allow the flesh actually to reign over the spirit, we found ourselves bound by, you know, the sinful patterns. The sinful patterns of this world, the sinful patterns na sarili natin. And desperation that marked Paul's life in Romans chapter, you know, seven na pinag-usapan natin, 'yung struggle, di ba, 'yung napag-usapan natin last time, 'yung gusto kong gawin, 'yung mabubuti pero hindi ko nagagawa. You know, our walk, the pattern of our life must be according to the spirit and not according to the flesh, as you can see here uh, sa text natin. And walking in the spirit means that the course, the dire- the direction, the progress of one's life is directed by the Holy Spirit. It is continued and, um, dapat may progressive motion siya, di ba? Uh, katulad nung ano po, katulad nung uh, pinag-usapan natin, uh, sanctification. Hindi lang siya one-time holiness. It is a repeated, you know, a daily process of being sanctified, no? Parin, can you, can you show the text, please? As it says in Galatians five, um, uh, sixteen, di ba? Uh, it reminds us, "So I say, walk by the spirit, and you will not gratify the desires of the flesh." But last week, we've been talking about, parang uh, si Paul was really, you know, relying to himself. Um, kaya hindi niya mapagtagumpayan 'yung sin and uh, of, or sinning, di ba? And now we are being reminded, no? Walk by the spirit, and you will not gratify the desires of the flesh. So, let's continue in the verses uh, five and eight. We will see, you know, the ineffectiveness of trying to please God in the flesh. Now, Paul states, um, "When we set our minds on the things of the flesh," no? Um, Paul gives an easy way for us to determine if we walk in the spirit or you walk in the flesh. To simply see where our mind is set. San ba, san ba talaga, ano, papunta yang mindset mo? Uh, papunta ba yan sa flesh or papunta yan sa spirit? You know, the mind is, you know, very powerful. It is the strategic battleground where the flesh and the spirit fight. But remember, um, to some few, to most of us here who attends our CCF Sunday service. Remember one of, um, Pastor Peter's talks sa atin a few Sundays ago? Uh, can you see the, ano, the, the picture, please, di ba? So the way we think, we will determine our actions, our emotions, and then our emotions determines our actions. So we have learned, di ba? Parang if we uh, think right, our emotions will be right, and then our actions will be right as well. But if we think negatively, if we think wrongly, then our emotions will also um, be wrong and uh, will be negative, and so our actions will be um, negative and wrong as well. You know, what I'm trying to say is that our mind is very, very powerful. The reality is that, you know, we shouldn't think those who set their minds on the things of, or of the flesh are only the notorious sinners. No, hindi, hindi para sa akin yan, para lang yan dun sa mga matitindi 'yung kasalanan, no? They may, there may be noble people like us, like you and me, who have good intentions, but who also falls into this. Peter meant well when he told Jesus to, sabi niya, di ba, to avoid the cross. Pero ano 'yung sinabi sa kanya ni Jesus? Uh, Jesus responded to Peter with very, very strong words. Sabi ni Jesus, "You are not mindful of the things of God, but the things of men." What we, what, what, what Paul is saying, what, what we are saying is that we are really tend or bound, no, um, for this type of actions. And then Paul said, "Those who are in the realm of the flesh cannot please God." In other translation po, no? We can, we can read that, "For to be carnally minded is death." And dun na naman 'yung word na carnal, di ba? Katulad ng binanggit natin uh, last week, um, which is deadly, no? Uh, very deadly. Uh very deadly, spiritually deadly. When our minds are set on the things of the flesh or carnally minded, we bring death into our lives. But walking in the Spirit brings life and peace. You know, Paul didn't say that yung carnal mind was somehow hostile with God. Um he put it even stronger than that. The carnal mind is hostile against God. It opposes the very character of God. You know, we can try to do good in life without being subject to the law of God. We may hope to put God in debt to us by good works, thinking God owes us. Pero alam namang po natin pare-pareho na, it will not work. It doesn't work that way. That is why Paul said, "In the flesh, we cannot please God." And even if the flesh does all of these religious things that are admired by men, and in other terms, we call it hypocrisy. Pero alam niyo po mga kaibigan, hindi lang si God yung, you know, um is disgusted by hypocrisy. Even men, even kapwa natin, wag na tayong lumayo, di ba? Um you yourselves, di ba? Uh you've, you've um um who, who you have observed, di ba? Parang when, when people are hypocrite, when we look at ourselves in the mirror, wag na tayo lumayo, di ba? Um parang it's disgusting, di ba? Let me give you a specific example. Meet Anton um LaVey, di ba? This guy is a proud Satanist, no? When you read this, you know, um when you read this primary reason why he became who he was, no? His answer was, um it wasn't about his rebellion or um his disgust about God or his disbelief about God, no? His primary reason why he became a Satanist is this. Um he's discussed with most of humanity, especially Christians who are hypocrites. So when we examine our high hearts, no? Why are we doing what we are doing right now? When we go to church, when we serve to church, no? Um, you know, I'm not judging anyone, I'm not implicating anything. I just want us to, you know, to reflect on this and check sa bu- sa, sa mga, sa, sa puso natin, ano ba natin ginagawa, yung ginagawa natin? Is it to please God or to please our inner flesh? Is it because, kasi ay, ang sarap ng feeling, uh ang daming, ang, ang tingin sa akin mabait? Or parang basically, ang sarap lang ng feeling, di ba? So is it for you or is it for God? Is it to please yourself, to please others, or to please God? And we are reminded, no, that God is not pleased with our flesh, with our activity. God is pleased kung ano yung nandito sa loob natin, okay? So, can I get an amen to that? Uh can I see a thumbs up? Everything okay pa tayo, pare-pareho? Alright, okay, let's continue. So, um next slide, please. So in verse nine, no, uh we can read, "You however are not in the realm of the flesh, but are in the realm of the Spirit, if indeed the Spirit of God lives in you." No, pag-usapan natin ito mabilis. Because the Holy Spirit is given to each believer when they are born again. Every Christian has within themselves a principle higher and more powerful than the flesh. And then it says, "And if anyone thus does not have the Spirit of Christ, they do not belong to Christ." This means every believer, every follower of Jesus Christ, everyone who said, "Jesus, I accept you as my Lord and Savior." "Jesus, you are my Lord," no? Every believer has the Holy Spirit. However, however, no? Many doom is out on living the Christian life in the constant fullness of it because they are not constantly being filled with the Holy Spirit. Kaya nga po, Paul commanded in Ephesians five eighteen, di ba? Uh can you, can you show that um to be filled with the Spirit? And it's not just a, and it's not a suggestion, mga kaibigan. Um and it's not a one-time thing, "Lord, I accept you as my Lord and Savior." Yes, ang sarap ng feeling, and I am filled with the Holy Spirit. What Paul is saying is that you be filled with the Spirit every day, every hour, every minute, every second of, of your life. Now, ang tanong, how does one know that they have the Spirit? How does one know if they have the Spirit? You can, you know, uh get your camera and um take a picture and then ask this. Pero I'm pretty sure you will uh have the answer uh from this question, questions, di ba? So how does one know they have the Spirit? You may ask this question, has the Spirit led you to Jesus? Next, has the Spirit put you the desire, put in you the desire to honor Jesus? Yung bang, you, you can check, ano ba yung Spirit na nandyan sa, sa iyo, di ba? Third, is the Spirit leading you to be more like Jesus? And last but not the least, is the Spirit at work in your heart? No, Paul continues, "And if the Spirit is in you, the body is dead because of sin." Because Jesus lives in us, the old self, body, no, uh is dead. But the Spirit lives and reigns. And will live out his salvation, Jesus' salvation, even through our mortal bodies through resurrection. Not only um we are in Christ, as we have, you know, as we have read in uh verse one, but he also is in you, in you and me. And because God cannot abide a sinful hope, yung body, yung self natin, o old self natin, had to die when Jesus came. You know, conversely, if we do not, you know, set our minds on the Spirit that is at work in us, you know, the reality is, we can be arrogant, we can be destructive, di ba? Sa lahat ng mga nalalaman natin, di ba? Uh anong effect nito kapag hindi tayo filled with the Holy Spirit? Um whether, you know, it can be destructive to our relationships, maybe to our fellow workers, to our apik bahay, to our, you know, family members, clients, business partners, or anyone else, right? Setting our minds on the Spirit, my friends, requires constant evaluation, no? Yung consequences, nung fruit na yun, the, or the positive effect of yung fruit sa ginagalawan natin, di ba? Um we should always ask ourselves, we should always, you know, evaluate um whether yung life ba na pinapakita natin, yung fruit of the Spirit brings quality in our life and brings quality to other people? Because if we are not honest in our assessment, no, no doubt, di ba? Um we are bound to be destructive, di ba? Um no doubt, it also requires daily repentance and the grace for us to change. You know, in this verses, um the Apostle Paul represents two excellent benefits, which belongs to the true believer. Number one is this, life. The happiness is not barely a negative happiness, not to be condemned, di ba? But it is positive. It is an advancement to a life that will have this unspeakable happiness of the man. Number two is that Christ is in us. Observe it, observe if the Spirit is in, uh is in us, if Christ is in us. Because if Christ is in us, di ba? He dwells in the heart by faith, as it says in Ephesians uh three seventeen. You know, as we, this text is quite, you know, short, di ba? Pero it's very, very meaningful and it's quite profound in a sense that uh it brings us hope. It brings us, you know, certain level of joy um because of the truth that is um, you know, that is being discussed here. And as we end, di ba, uh can you go to the last slide, please? Uh second to the last slide, please, no? As we end, di ba, all of this truth, all of this great, all of this great revelation, di ba? Now comes the application. And then Paul says here, "We have an obligation." And then he reiterated, "Not to the flesh." Itong lahat ng pinakingina, pinakinabangan natin na truth, in a sense na nalalaman natin, this is not for us, because the flesh, no, again, in the sinful flesh, in rebellion against God, gave us nothing good. Let me repeat that. Every time na sinusunod natin tong flesh na to, walang dinulot na mabuti. So what Paul is saying is that we have no obligation or we are not obliged to pamper this flesh. Our obligation is to the Lord, not to the flesh, di ba? Amen, can I get an amen to that? Our obligation is to the Lord and not to the flesh. And then he said, "If you are living according to the flesh, you will die." Paul constantly, parang paulit-ulit na natin tong naririnig, di ba? Paul constantly reminds us that living after the flesh ends in death. You know, the reality is, parang ang batas si Paul, paulit-ulit na lang. The reality kasi po is, we need this reminder, constant reminder, because we are often deceived into thinking that the flesh offers us life. Everything that is convenient sa flesh natin, we immediately think na parang, okay, this is life. Di ba? Kaya nga may work, may, may song, may phrase na, "This is life." Kapagka nakaka-experience tayo ng comforting sa flesh, di ba? And the tendency is that we keep on pampering it, and then we are, we are deceived by it. And at the end, we are, you know, tayo din yung nasasaktan, na tayo din yung napapahama. And then he ended it by this, "By the Spirit, you put to death the misdeeds of the body." When we put our, when we put uh to death the deeds of the body, no? "We must do it by the Spirit and not by our own strength, nor our knowledge about this world." Otherwise, pag ginagawa natin to, para tayo yung mga nababasa natin din sa, sa Bible, di ba? Para tayo mga Pharisees, and we, we become spiritually proud. And so, all of these things na naacquire nitong napaka-powerful na mind na to, di ba? It shouldn't be for the flesh. We shouldn't be like, oh, ang dami kong alam, dami ko natutunan dito sa miyerkulist. And so, makikipagdebate ako, para mas malaman na, alam ko yun tungkol kay Christ. But you know, the reality is, hindi naman doon na pi-please si Lord eh. In fact, yun kanina'y pag-usapan natin, it's quite disgusting, you know, to debate about, what's, what's the purpose? Uh when we debate for people to know that we are right and that we are knowledgeable? Or is it, we really wanted uh for people to know the truth? Or we just, you know, want to push the truth sa kanila? Either way, we, it's not good and it's, you know, it shows that we are spiritually proud. No, Paul tells us that not only are we saved by the work, but we also must walk by the Spirit if we want to grow and pursue holiness in the Lord. You shall live, kaibigan, you shall live, kapatid. Live, live, and be happy eternity. That is the true life. If you, through the Spirit, suppress yung deeds ng body, no? Subdue and keep under all fleshly lust and affections. Deny yourselves in the pleasing of the body. And this, sa totoo lang, mahirap to gawin. We cannot do it without the Spirit working in us. You know, often, sad to say, some Christians will doubt their salvation because um their sanctification has proceeded, no? Parang ang bagal, parang malamya, no? And then somehow, some Christians, you know, have this big question mark, "Pischanong nga ba ako? Kasi parang hindi ako nagpo-progress, ang bagal, ang lamya." You know, the Spirit does not base its testimony on the progress of growth. Again, it is about the possession, the fact of possession. The Spirit leads people to call upon God as Father, to look away from ourselves. Hindi tayo yung parang, uh you know, uh the, the thing is, we are depressed because we are looking into our own strength or our own activities. Hindi yung activity na ginagawa ng Spirit sa atin. Well, some of us would say, you know, um ano ba yan, simula naging kristyanong ako, parang mas marami, parang ang hirap-hirap ng buhay. You know, look at it this way. Nung simula naging kristyanong ka, because the Holy Spirit is working in you, na buka yung mata mo sa mga bagay na hindi mo na dapat gawin. And so, parang ang feeling mo, para ako nasasakal, o para ka nasasakal, kasi parang ang daming restrictions, no? The Spirit works in you, and the Spirit is now opening your eyes, no? To what of the things that you should not do, di ba? The, because the primary work of the Holy Spirit is to make us just like Jesus Christ. Hindi para po pahirapan tayo na parang uh maraming restrictions or anything else. It is really to open our eyes, ano yung mga bagay na hindi na natin dapat gawin? At ano yung mga bagay na dapat natin gawin for the primary reason of, we need to become more like Jesus Christ? Of all the truth, napakinggan natin, or pinapakinggan natin, the ultimate goal, the ultimate obligation is for us to, you know, magpasakop tayo sa Holy Spirit, for us to be able to become more like Jesus each and every single day of our lives, until tayo ikunin na, di ba? And so, I'll end um with this story, uh as we end. I'll end with this story because next week, no, it will be uh Kuya Art, who will continue this um study, no? Um you know, uh this is a story of a professor, no? Who wanted to teach um his uh theology students um a certain lesson, no? So, um actually, kinikwento ko ng isang ano, kinikwento ko ng isang student. So sabi niya, "One of my um memorable um uh seminary professors had a practical way of illustrating his students yung concept ng grace, you know?" And at the end of yung course niya, or yung subject niya, he would distribute an exam. And sinabi niya dun sa mga students niya na, um uh actually, ang tabilin-biline niya dun sa mga student niya na, basahin niyo yung, yung din-distribute niyang paper um all the way from beginning to end, before they will answer it. And so, discussion was actually written. Hindi niya lang sinasabi, pero nakalagay rin dun sa mismong test paper. And so, um uh as they read yung, yung test, it became unquestionably clear um um to them, no? Habang binabasa nila isa-isa, na parang, teka, hindi naman ito yung pinag-aralan namin eh. Teka, parang itong exam na binibigay eh, hindi naman ito yung pinag-aralan. So, parang the, the students were saying that the further they read, the worse it becomes, they became, no? About halfway through nung exam papers, um nakakarinig na sila ng, parang, you know, yung mga, para typical students, ano ba yan? Parang nakakarinig na sila ng, parang, ay, ano ba to? Now, on the last page, however, no? Naka, nakalagay dun, merong note yung professor. Nakalagay dun sa note, "You have a choice. You can either complete the exam or give, as given, or sign your name at the bottom, and in so doing, you will receive an A for this exam." Karamihan sa kanila were stunned, no? Um and then, you know, parang Um, and then, you know, parang dinaw, "Are you serious? Uh, just, uh, you know, parang seryoso ba 'yung professor? Na parang pipirmalang kami tas makakakuha kami ng A for an answer, no? Slowly, 'yung pointong professor eh, medyo nakikita na nila. And one by one, um, 'yung, they turned to the test and silently, you know, filled, filled out 'yung, 'yung kwarto, uh, o 'yung exams room. Now, nung kinausap nitong student na 'to 'yung professor, no? 'Yung professor shared some reactions na na-received niya throughout the years. And the professor said, "Some students began to take the exam without reading it all the way through and they would sweat, you know? Mahihirapan sila pag nang malagkit for many hours, um, before they reach out to the last page." 'Yung iba naman, uh, would just read the first two pages and then magagalit na. And then, ang kaihinat na non, hindi na lang siya sasagot. Tapos 'yung iba, aalis na lang ng kwarto, never realizing kung ano 'yung available. And at the result, no? Um, kalunan sila totally. 'Yung iba naman eh, binasa 'yung buong test, including 'yung note dun sa end. Um, pero ang masaklap, despite of nabasa nila 'yung note dun sa end, eh, nag-take pa rin sila nung exam. Bakit? Ayaw nila 'yung ganong gift. Gusto nilang patunayan na, "I can earn my grade." And so, 'yung iba ginawa lang 'yung exam. But honestly, 'yung mga gumawa ng exam na yun, bumagsak pa din. Kasi nga, hindi naman 'yun ang pinag-aralan nila. And they could have easily, you know, um, had an A score. You know, mga kapatid, Romans eight is the last line actually on the test of life. All who reads, or who, all who have read the words, um, from chapter one to chapter seven, up until now, chapter eight, believes that, you know, uh, um, you know, they can pass, uh, God's test with flying colors. They get an A, so to speak. Some, no, sad to say, hear about God's holiness, but gave up even, you know, trying to make the grade. Some spend an entire lifetime angry with God, who desires to give them grace. And of course, a lot of people depend upon, you know, morality and good, good deeds for them to go to heaven. Parang, "I alam na nila 'yung katotohanan, hindi, I will earn my way to heaven." You know, unfortunately, nothing less than a perfect score will do. Kasi the reality is, only by God's grace can any of us achieve a perfect score. Mga kapatid, like the professor, God makes us an offer that seems to be good to be true. But the truth is, it's the only question that ultimately matters. Would you take the grace of God or would you reject it? For us who are Christians na matagal na, di ba? For us who are believers for quite a long time, would you live a life that is according to the will of your flesh? Or live a victorious, spirit-filled life that is anchored to Jesus? Let's bow our heads and pray. Lord, thank you that we are a family in Christ. Panginoon, tulungan niyo po kami to share and apply the knowledge that we are acquiring from this Bible study and the love from you, our Lord Jesus. Allow us to encounter you every single day of this week, every single day of our lives. May we lavish your abounding goodness upon our families, our friends, our colleagues. Holy Spirit, come and equip us in our families, our loved ones, in our workplace, guide us in our school life, inspire us in our neighborhood. May we be your hands and feet to those who are in need, your words of affirmation to those who are frustrated and depressed. Panginoon, gamitin mo po kami na maging kamay mo to comfort the lonely. We humbly ask that you use us to bring your kingdom here on earth. Holy Spirit, fill us every single day of our lives, not to please our flesh, our Lord. And this pray, in Jesus mighty's name, and everybody say, amen and amen and amen. Pravingsalamat po again, God bless everyone.